President. Mr. Benaville.
President.
Ms. Gilroy.
President.
Mr. Seuss.
President.
Chairman and President.
Next, I have a prayer for Mr. Porter. And our flag will be extended.
O'er God, O'er Father, we are again blessed to be here. We're thankful for this country, thankful for this county. We're thankful for the democratic process we get to vote. Whatever the outcome, God, we pray that we will honor the persons that are elected, as we are taught to, because we know that they serve only at your pleasure. God, also right now, we pray for those that have been affected by the virus, the coronavirus, that those that have been affected will have a speedy recovery. We pray that it will not spread further than it already has. Watch over us, God, and guide us every day, in Christ's name.
For the legends do the light of the United States of America. A republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Next, we want to need to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? No awards or presentations, no comment. We'll move on to discussion items. First thing on our discussion item, excuse us, County Road 412. We got Mayor Shelton and Stacy Leibner here to go over what you got.
I've got one big map and an amount for each of you. As you know, as you know, the city is in the process of building a new sale addition at our landfill. And we...
Mr. Mayor, for the public's benefit, could you give them that?
Appreciate it. Yeah. What might?
Uh-huh. No, there's, he's got a hand held one right there.
Yeah, right back here.
Sure.
That was one of the biggest complaints last week, and everyone's speaking up, so...
Speak up. Thank you. Can you hear me now? Alright, anyway, the city of Scottsburg is in the process of building the new sale at our landfill. And as part of this sale, we're gonna be moving our maintenance building and so forth. And what we're asking for is for the county to consider vacating a portion of County Road 412. Your map will show the property boundaries of the city property there in Hollywood. And so it's something that we would like for you to consider over the next several months. Our sale construction won't start till later this year, and we need everything to stay as is until this sale is built and in operation. But at that point, you can see, we would like to close, it's right at 2,000 feet of County Road 412, and just put gates up. I've driven the road multiple times, and all residents affected would have closer access to Highway 72. I don't think it's gonna affect anybody traveling through the city on property, but it would be a great benefit to us, and just asking for your consideration on closing this portion of 412. I'll take any questions, or we can come back at a later date. I know it's a lot to take in.
Would it be the city's intent to open either or both gates during the day?
Oh, yeah. Once we come in, at the morning, the landfill people will come in personnel, that gate will be open for, obviously, the traffic coming from either direction. It would just be closed at night, and that road would be closed at night on the city property.
Would first responders be notified? I mean, families?
It would be something that we would publish, and it'd be ample notice put out, you know, and realistically, for this to go into effect is, I would say, a minimum of six months down the road, if not nine months. So, just something to consider, but yes, during the day, the road, both gates would be open.
And the city owns property on both sides?
Yes, yes, good. And at some point, way down the road, probably beyond my lifetime, where the road is vacated, could potentially be another sale addition for the landfill. And if that's something that does happen, as far as closing the road, it would possibly affect whether or not we need to buy additional property as we look at the footprint of the landfill itself. But that has been identified as potential space many years down the road. I want to bring it for consideration.
Please, 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 Mayor, just make it for security.
Sir?
I said, the gates...
We have to, by eighteen, we have to walk the landfill at night.
If there's more exits where we can help, security.
It is strictly of security, and no trespassing area after hours.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We want to go ahead and touch this on the meeting. The debate. The debate on the federal banking fraud.
Thank you.
Yeah, can we have it on one more work session? Mr. Campbell, let's time it up.
Martha.
Rename the road, meet you in, just when you decide your number.
He would probably work best for now.
Okay. Go ahead and make the work session. Next, be the fireboats. Mayor Shelton, I wanted to go ahead and bring this up. It's been a topic, City Council, I just want the mayor to explain what those guys do.
Okay, I had brought up, after all the events that happened at County Park, and we'll back history, Chief Nicholas and I had already had some discussions with the City Council about purchasing some fireboats as we tried to promote our, you know, our lake and recreation there and so forth. But after the tragic event that week, I ran into Tim down there, and Chief and I had already talked about it again, and I ran into Tim and said, you know, as we move forward, we need to talk about this, and would like for the county to consider possibly figuring out a way to partner, or keep one here, and one at Goose Pond Colony and so forth. And he said, well, you know, I'm not sure we are in a position that we can do something right now, but certainly, you know, after we see what insurance does, and we get beyond this, something to consider. And then later that week, I saw Jason at the County Park, and basically had the same conversation, and he thought it was a good idea, and, you know, something that would have to be discussed with everybody. And since then, I had brought it up at a council meeting, and the council, actually, it's on our work session tonight, but what I'm formally requesting is that the city, I feel very confident it's gonna move forward in purchasing two fireboats, and we want to keep one at Goose Pond Colony and one at County Park. And so we'd like for the county to participate in that, just really from a story standpoint. And I think Chief had got any questions? He's very adamant, and I agree, that the fireboat would be at its own dock, it wouldn't be as part of the slips of, you know, multiple slips on a particular pier. Those are details that would have to be worked out, the same with Goose Pond Colony, we don't want it to be where we couldn't get quick access. But all we're asking for at this time is support in the project, and y'all will look at, and as we move forward, a place to store the boat. And, you know, if it's in your means somewhere down the road, that you could contribute financially, that's great. I'm not here asking for that. I'm not asking for that, but we just appreciate a partnership in that regard, because the chief is very committed to the boat, as am I, and the training and all that goes with it, equipping it, but the dock space, we have no control over. So that's what I'm here for tonight.
Good. Any questions for Mayor and the votes?
I'd just like to say, appreciate you coming to us, like, Mayor, I think it's a good idea, when you approached me about it down there, you know, I can only speak for myself, but I can't imagine that the commission wouldn't want to participate. You know, our financial situation, but the parks are standalone entities, so we might be able to do something from park revenue, once we get back up and running and get our full revenue back, we might be able to do something to the park revenue that wouldn't affect the general fund.
Well, and, you know, as far as the logistics of where it's located and all that, we're hoping TDA might participate, but we'd like an independent dock, a floating dock that's just dedicated for this specific boat. And I think that's, at this point, that's what we're asking for, and it'll be the same with Goose Pond. And if it's where one or two or all could come tonight and have that discussion with the whole council body, I know Goose Pond's gonna be represented as well. That's the biggest concern right now, is just, you know, we don't wanna buy a boat, or two boats, and have to trade it every time. We need real quick access.
Thank you for including us, Mayor.
I feel like it was a good concern, Mayor. I mean, it came out of paper, so if I could interpret it, probably someone else would have it wrong, Lee.
Well, I can say, my private conversations with the two at different times was, you know, one was, let's see what insurance does, and other was, yeah, we need to discuss that as a whole body.
Right. Anything else I should be referring to?
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, I do appreciate you bringing that. You've always been good to work with the county, and I appreciate the relationship you've grown forth, county and city, so appreciate it.
Appreciate how y'all do.
I want to thank you, the job that you guys done that night. I hadn't had a chance to talk to you, so I know Paul's here, but we really do appreciate everything that you guys done, and keep thinking of that.
If I may, I appreciate you, and I saw most of you down there, I appreciate Paul's office, and I want to say nothing but great things about the MA office, about you guys, about our volunteer departments, they all chipped in, were right there with us, and the rescue squad specifically, so, but I appreciate you mentioning it.
Thank you.
Mr. Gene, I'd like to say one other thing. I got there just shortly after it started, and I just want to express my sympathy to all your firefighters. I know it was a bad night, and a bad time for us, but everybody, all of our volunteer department acted professionally, and they done an outstanding job, and I want to praise you for that, Scottsburg and everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three is your SSUT tax. We, if you look in your page, you'll have a draft on earmarking those dollars. I'd like to have some discussion on that.
I think we had mentioned a larger amount filled toward the council and senior programs, but the question was, I think that's the main changes to some of the other reimbursements we get, so we thought we might as well drop that amount down.
Yes, sir.
We budgeted 325, or 350?
350.
350 for this, and we're anticipating coming in well over that, closer to, maybe even over a half million. So we passed a budget estimate of almost 300,000. So this will put our budget into positive, maybe as much as 300,000.
Positive 300?
Yeah.
It might be not that much, but we will be positive. It'll be close. It just depends on how the rest of the year, it'll be close.
Well, maybe another work session or two, I would like to discuss if we're gonna free up 300,000 dollars toward putting money toward our senior programs in the general fund, or general fund not going on a deficit, with our 20-plus percent turnover rate, problem we're having retaining people, and the problem we're having attracting applicants, maybe we'll look at doing something for the employees.
And it'll be a good time for the thing, Almer and Steady shouldn't be kind of that. We just like to think, they like two more. Once we get those back, we should have a real good feeling on where everybody should be, and that might help us out.
Mr. Chairman, on the, number two, where it says the 300 or anything over that sum to go to the jail?
Yes, sir.
That, just to clarify, is in addition, I mean, not in addition to any money going to the jail, but to replace the money coming out of the general fund, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And I agree with Mr. Benaville on the freeing up the money to help with employees.
My only issue on this, Mr. Benaville, we earmark this, it kinda makes it a little more uncertain. I mean, I know we got this as a basis each year, but it makes it a little harder, I guess, for us to write up more funding when we're trying to seek money into everybody, because we got so many of the different agencies that need this, so it's just kinda, I've been trying to figure it out here the last couple weeks, and see, you know, if earmarking is correct, what earmark, you know? Because we know we got this basis, but we got so many other things that's out there, and some things is even unseen, so I kinda questioned that, though I talked to you the other day about that.
Well, you know, we don't have any funding source for the jail. The jail is paid completely out of the general fund. We don't have any funding source outside of some federal state aid, you know, for some of our senior programs.
It's very little.
With that for discussion, whatever anybody wants to do, but I just feel like we needed to lock those funds down. That revenue stream is growing, you know, there's a lot of talk, leaving municipalities and state education to get some of those funds, because when they started out, they didn't anticipate being very much money. Like, we budgeted 40,000 dollars the first year, and it's outperformed every year, and I just feel like it would do us well to earmark and say where those dollars are gonna go year in and year out.
I agree. I mean, we've come to a place to where our senior, if we don't do something, our senior services is our last appropriation. Me and you took office 2012 with that ever appropriation that was being given, except for council and agent. And that is something that I don't want to see anything happen to, and I feel like this is a way to protect it, and ensure that we can keep our senior services where it's there for those people, because they really do need it. The rural transportation, senior RX, I talked to several people who, if you would for senior RX, could not, it would be a decision between eating or medicine. So, I mean, it's vital that we keep our senior services going.
Well, I totally agree with that. I mean, I didn't mean anything negative on that approach, because, you know, I'm drawing near that single system thing myself, so anything we can do, we have plus to that. But I just was looking at it, like, I don't know if it's appropriate thing to go with, and I was trying to seek extra money to bring into the county. I was just leaving it open. That's all the discussion I was trying to put out.
Anybody else have any discussion on the SSUT tax? Alright, if nothing else, we'll put it on next week's meeting. Next, be extending council and agent temporary bus driver. Basically, we, Ms. Thurman is just asking us to extend that for another six months. But they ain't bringing on anybody else, it's just the current driver they have. Any discussion on that? We'll move that to next week's meeting. Number five, be a surplus commission IT truck, excuse me. This truck, how many miles on that truck?
15,000.
How many?
15,000.
The one with surplus?
Two, 65, 275.
Yep. It's well past, we need to get that out of our inventory. So that's the one that Ross used to drive.
It relies on, it's in bad shape.
Good.
Are we gonna assume, put it on gut deals while we have done some other equipment that is...
Yeah, if that's good with the commission.
...late in its life, by the last it flies.
Well, it is, yes, the toner, several toners, it is.
Yes, sir.
Alright, nobody has a problem, we'll put that on next week's meeting. Number six, county vehicle policy. That's become an issue, so we want to talk tonight about creating a policy that'll stipulate who drives vehicles and who doesn't, and then what the rules are.
We want to have Mr. Porter start on the vehicle policy that's going in our handbook, and might have it as the next work session. Is that the way we want to approach it?
Yeah. That'd be good. Mr. Porter, can you do that for the next work session?
Mr. Chairman, I've been the one that's been bringing this up, and, you know, we need to get a little more discussion on it, because I still feel the same way. I don't feel like it's necessary to be driven back and forth to the home. As far as personal business, I'm fine, but if it pertains to the county, anything right here, you know, is okay with me. Gary's something about her liking, I don't know what he's liking about, probably because I said personal business, but I didn't mean to say personal business.
I don't use it as a personal business.
I knew when I said that. I'm talking about business that pertains to the county, put it that way, it's not a personal business, but I'm okay with it. But as far as it being driven otherwise, I'm not. Now, I don't know how the rest of my constituents feel, but I just feel like we're trying to bring money and control spending, and I see it as waste myself.
Maybe before Mr. Porter starts, say, policy, maybe the next work session, Chairman wants to bring in some of his past expenditures on driving his personal vehicle, is that the way we could look at it?
Be glad to.
My understanding that it's actually cheaper for the chairman to have his vehicle than it would charging mileage, but, you know, going Montgomery Prep or Birmingham or something at 58 cents a mile.
In 2019, of course, now we, you know, we didn't get a lot for the truck that I'm driving, but in 2019, if you take the amount of gas and the amount that we paid for the truck, it would've saved $4,000 in 2019 if I'd been driving a truck versus driving my truck, personal truck, at 58 cents a mile.
Well, there's no question on 58 cents a mile, but you still ain't answering my question, you know, driving back and forth to home, that's what the message was, Chairman. I mean, why do you feel it's being necessary to have to drive, is your own personal vehicle?
Because I'm gonna call 24/7.
24/7.
And I have been out at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, on different issues, so that's why.
Well, I still disagree with that part, you know, I mean, because, I mean, I guess I could say I was gonna call 24/7 also.
That's the only thing you do.
You know, there's a lot of times I'm called out, a lot of things that I help out with the volunteer department, but, you know, that's part of my job, and I'm not asking for no compensation for it.
Well, we currently allow our people, such as Public Works Department, that's on call to drive a vehicle home, and, you know, they're taxed, if you will, what is it, $3 a day? Yeah, something like that. So, I mean, the chairman's not driving it for absolutely no cost, and that is, I'm sure, being taken out of his pay each period. And I was, the chairman's been really good to help with the Sheriff's Department, the auxiliary deputy, and I don't have an issue with it, we just need to look at the dollars, you know, look and see, as long as it's not costing the county money, we purchased those two vehicles, you know, from the Revenue Commissioners Department, that we're gonna buy two new vehicles with money other than the county money. It was the Revenue Commissioners dollars, we only paid, what, 14? 15%? 14, about 9% or something of their expenditures, so it costs the county very little money to buy those two vehicles. Well, I'd like to look at the numbers, maybe the next work session, and then move forward from there.
Also, if you remember on the 18th of June, I believe it was, in the budget year, that this was brought up and approved by this body 100%.
It was, indeed.
But I don't remember being brought up and said, "He's gonna use it for your own personal gain," though, for that part, it's only a question I have. You know, I was like, "By the people," and I mean, if I'm gonna sit right here and okay everything, you know, I don't feel like I'm doing my job. I mean, I'm not trying to cause conflict, but no mean, but that's just where I stand on this.
Everybody up here was elected by the people.
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned also, she's only one in the state that did not have a vehicle. That's not correct.
No, I didn't say that. I said, 67 chairmen's and the majority of them do have vehicles.
Yeah, but you told me you was only one, and according to Sonny Bresel, that's not correct.
There's a lot they do and some that don't, it's up to the commission to decide whether or not we want to allow that, so we'll look at the numbers in the next work session, if they're out with everybody. You up for that?
Alright, number seven, the old DHR building. Does everybody give us some thought to what this body would like to do about that building?
I would like to take, seal bids on it, have a Oakland neighborhood, seal bids, make a proposal for the money leasing the building, or if somebody wants to build, purchase in the building outright, and we'll have some to look at. I mean, right now, we're just, we don't know.
Yeah, I agree, the leasing part too, especially, because we're looking for some kind of source of revenue, so that would be a source of revenue if possible. And, Mr. Benaville, you said you were against being in the rental property business, but we kinda sorta already are with KCs and the watercraft, so would you be something to entertain the thought and see where the money was going, and see how much money we're looking at there?
Well, the KCs and the watercraft and the cabins and camping, that's the County Park separate budget. This would be getting the general fund into rental property, and I'm just against that, but, I mean, we'll do whatever the commission and the body decides to do, but I'm willing to look at whatever numbers come in.
We're just always looking for a source of revenue, I just thought we'd entertain it and see where it went.
So you're requesting to take sealed bids for purchase or leasing?
Proposals.
Correct.
Now, this is not gonna actually be the final place of it, so...
We'll get to, we will receive, hopefully, several proposals, we'll look at them, and we can either decide to do something completely different, or we can accept one of the proposals and move forward. I would assume, and we're not agreeing for it.
Yes, ma'am, and you probably ought to discuss if you're gonna set the terms of the lease, or you want the bidder to set the terms of the lease, one-year lease, five-year lease, 10-year, whatever. You can leave that up to the bidder. If you ask for sealed bids for lease, then the bidder will submit the terms that they are willing to go by, or this commission can say, we're gonna submit bids for five years, renewable for five years, or...
We also need to limit what we're responsible for. HPHC, the roof in the parking lot, I would think would be the only thing that we would be willing to do regular maintenance on, and then I would be fine, you know, if we wanted to, so five-year, with a possible five-year renewal.
You want to do that, or leave it to the bidder? Which would...
I'd rather everybody be bidding, I mean, because you're gonna get, you know, a mixed bag of stuff, if we're gonna be careful.
How many sport figures that's been at?
18,000, some change, I think.
Then we need to address, though, like, what kind of reconstruction, if they'll be free to reconstruct, to do, you know, what they need to do, or what, at that point?
Yeah, I would, you know, the county, I don't think needs to put any money toward remodeling.
No, but I mean, just what we're allowing them to do or not to do, you know, take out laws, things like that, might need to be some kind of guidance in there.
Yeah. Those kind of things would normally be covered in the lease itself.
Okay.
It'd be hard to, but you can, and we can set out a very detailed criteria, but it seems to me like... It seems to me like what you're looking for is, you know, is it economically feasible to lease this building or not? If you did on five-year, uh, lease with five-year renewals, uh, with the provisions that we're not responsible for any cost other than what normally would be covered in a commercial lease and the rest of that as to what improvements they can make without our rip permission, then we can cover all that in the lease agreement itself.
Thank you, sir.
And also, would it, uh, need to make sure about the sublease? Probably somebody wanted to rent it and sublease that somebody else, you know, or that would be, you know, a good idea.
Can you be the, have it ready for the next work session?
Yes, I was going to say, maybe the next work session, and maybe we could grow up some type of frame, you know, some type of agreement or.
I'll, I'll try to kind of, I took what y'all had mentioned, and I can put it all together and make for the next work session, and then we can add or take away from that.
Sounds good to me.
Anybody else got anything on the old DHR building?
Has anybody checked out the roof, the leak?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, uh, Wayne has got somebody going over this one. Next be reports from staff, I'm Mr. Man.
We're doing it.
Oh, we got, we got three more of them.
Yeah, I got, oh, I'm sorry about that. All right, I'm ready. Uh, contract custodian for the public works department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Um, you should have a draft copy of the contract in your packets. And I'll just briefly explain the intent of this. Uh, one is to alleviate some funds from the general fund that would be, now be out of our funds. And two is just to maintain our facility, nice facility. So, um, the intent for that, uh, I think covers some shorthandedness that, that the custodians are experiencing now from the maintenance aspect of the general fund. Uh, so we provide that contract as a solution for both of those things.
Okay. I'm not letting you put it in there.
I don't have anything on that.
No contract? I have a draft copy. Um, number six, I think needs, needs some revision that we've determined, but if, that's the only one, so if you don't mind, pass it along.
If you had a chance to look at it.
Go ahead and go on, briefly.
Do you need it back right now?
I looked at it today, I can only say one thing, only that to me it wasn't correct, so I'll give you like that. It's pretty basic, it'd be basically coming back and there's no benefits, uh, to it, it'd just be, uh, contract for the hours that she works.
If you want to move forward with that, put it on the agenda for next week. I'll revise that draft and get it out to everybody so you can have it for next week.
Everybody good with, let Mr. Porter revise that and email it out to everybody, and then we can go on it. And if somebody got a problem, which I always state, let me next week.
How long was contract, I was just breaking, what was it? How long time period was it?
To have it happen, everyone is.
There's, there's no timeframe on that, it would be the department's discretion.
Okay, I just wanted to say that, I think, look what we're doing. Thank you, John.
Number nine, state limit on County Road three six four, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, this comes to us by citizen request, and, uh, you should find in your packet a resolution to, to set a speed other than a non-posted forty-five on County Road three six four. Um, this was determined by engineering methods, so from a speed study, we evaluate that and then exercise engineering judgment in the horizontal, horizontal, vertical alignment, um, you know, housing population, et cetera. So I have the supporting details to the traffic study, if you're interested in viewing those. Uh, basically, just as a reminder, that's, that's eighty-fifth percentile speed limit that we look at to set a benchmark for what is already being driven and what is deemed safe for the conditions that exist on the roadway.
Any more questions on three sixty-four speed limit? No, we'll put it down next week's meeting. Number ten, the public sport truck bids.
Thank you, Chairman. There should be three different categories, and in your packets, um, there should be bid tabs for each category of truck. What we tried to do is list who all the solicitations were mailed out to, and then the bids that we received. So on most of those, you'll notice that state bid was the lower of all that were received, with the exception of one type of truck, and that was, um, the dealership in Fort Payne that we had purchased previously by, they were actually lower, lower on one category. And just, just a little more information, this is just staying consistent with the surplus and purchase plan that was approved previously. This is the stage we talked about, that once we actually send out the solicitations, receive the bids, they'll come before you all, before we actually pull the trigger and purchase. So if there are any questions about numbers of vehicles or the categories we talked about, et cetera, be happy to answer any questions I might.
Are the bids in the ballpark you were expecting?
We're actually below, um, if you remember when we were going through the different categories of this capital outlay, we, um, we estimated conservatively, so we're about forty thousand under in two categories, okay? So they're a little under what we had presented to you.
Very good.
All right, any more questions on the bid? If everybody's good with it, we'll put it on the next week's meeting. Next be reports from staff, um. Mr. Campbell, do you have anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Porter?
All right, thank you.
Mr. Nash, you have, Mr. Rice, you have anything, Sheriff Porter? Paul, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Next, the comments by the commission, Mr. Seuss.
I guess what to say on tomorrow is, well, the freedoms we still have, just everybody go out and exercise their freedom to vote, and, uh, just examine the candidates and decide who you want to happily discounter. Thank you.
Skilber?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Venable?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Mr. Seuss said, just, I think it's supposed to be raining and it'll be raining tomorrow, but, uh, everybody just be careful getting out of the roads, but do please get out.
Mr. Rich?
I'd like to, I'd like to congratulate, good luck to everybody that's sitting around in, be sure everybody gets out and votes. It's going to be raining, I hope it won't rain bad, but get everybody, and get them to go vote. Appreciate it, everybody have good luck tomorrow.
That's it for today, entertain votes if you do, Chairman.
One more question.
All right. Paul, if there's a doubt?
Aye.